Oh man, that was the worst place to go to a concert.
Who?
Uh, was it Nashville?
Where did you see this?
My bread. My dog.
I'd like to call the board to order the meeting of the East Point Planning Commission for December 1st, 2022. Secretary, please call and roll.
Mr. Broll.
Present.
Mr. Leland.
You.
Ms. Julinski, here. Ms. Naylor.
Here.
Mr. Lubeck.
Here.
Chairman DeHaute.
Here.
Ms. Munoz. She's not gonna be here? Oh.
All right, moving on to the first, I'm sorry, to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, let me add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, under new business, I'd like to add a special meeting for zoning ordinance amendment review for the January meeting. I guess we're gonna discuss it, or at least add it at this point.
Do we have a second? I'll support that. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll.
Yes.
Mr. Lubeck.
Yes.
Mr. Leland.
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Ms. Naylor.
Yes.
Chairman DeHaute.
Yes.
Moving on to the first hearing of the public. Uh, unless somebody is hiding. Uh, I think we don't have anybody in the audience, so we'll close the hearing of the public. Moving on, can I get a motion for approval of the minutes of the meeting for November 3rd, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubeck.
Yes.
Mr. Leland.
Yes.
Mr. Broll.
Abstain.
Ms. Naylor. Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHaute.
Abstain.
Moving on, we have no public hearing. We shall move on to new business. Secretary, or I'm sorry, shall we, I'll defer to Ms. Brascheshevsky. Uh, do we can address Mr. Broll's motion, please? Just give us a little color on it, please, on what we're doing.
Okay, uh, so that's now item A?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for making the, the motion to support a special meeting in January for the review of our zoning ordinance update. So this is where we'll present our draft text of the zoning ordinance and also call for a public hearing. We would like the planning commission to decide upon or agree with the January 19th date. Staff have, has already vetted this date with their calendar, and January 19th seems to be okay.
Commission, how does that sound to you all?
Is that a 7 o'clock or 6:30, what time did everybody have available?
Well, 7 PM is the normal planning time, if that's okay.
I'm curious, what day of the week is it?
Thursday, January 19th.
Thursday, okay.
Thank you.
So that was the special meeting in January?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so I know it would be another month.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Chair, I can add the reason why we have the special meeting is because the January 5th meeting is that, yeah, the January 5th meeting is packed with development reviews and special land reviews, uh, from the marijuana, the three marijuana projects.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, I think we're gonna move on, but I'm gonna have Ms. Holman. No, do we need a motion, uh, Mr. Holbreit? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the special meeting on January 19th at 7 PM?
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Leland.
Yes.
Ms. Naylor.
Yes.
Mr. Broll.
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Mr. Lubeck.
Yes.
Chairman DeHaute.
Yes.
For the next item, and under new business, I'm actually gonna defer to Ms. Holman, uh, since Mr. McCain is a employee of the city, uh, so I will defer to you.
Members of the planning commission, I am so pleased to introduce McCain as the new economic development manager. He is a resident of East Point. He has specialized in a number of different projects and economic development. He focuses particularly on women and minority owned businesses and entrepreneurs, and we are really excited. He has been a perfect fit, um, in the city manager's office. And actually, his first day was preparation for elections, and he did that too. So, uh, we do welcome him. Um, I hope that you each have a chance to introduce yourselves at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. McCain, is it McCain McCann? McCain, do you have anything to say?
Uh, no, just, um, glad to be here, nice to meet all of you, and I look forward to getting in and running around.
Welcome, thank you. Moving on to the last item under new business would be parking minimum presentation, Ms. Brascheshevsky.
Chair, if I may, I'll actually present this one.
Okay.
All right, so you can see on the screen here's the presentation, and I'm excited that we are finally able to talk about this topic. Um, I know we talked about it a little bit two months ago, but I hope that this presentation is helpful to set some more background information about why we need to right-size our parking requirements in the city. Okay, so to start out, um, tonight we'll be talking about what is the current problem with parking. We'll just briefly discuss the DDA parking analysis, um, how we can right-size our parking, what are the benefits to reducing parking requirement, and why we recommend a procedural change over a variance in some cases. And then, um, we'll also look at some case studies and answer any questions that you may have. So to start out with the parking problem, um, this is an aerial image of businesses on the north side of Nine Mile, right at Nine Mile and I-94. Um, and I don't know what time of day this aerial was taken, but it was taken in 2022. Um, and you can see there's quite a bit of unused parking here, and I've only highlighted large chunks of unused parking. But there is, you know, a lot of empty spaces intermingled with the cars. Um, I also purposely avoided the area around the Secretary of State office, because I know that does fill up during the day. But again, it fills up during the day and not after 5 o'clock when some of the other businesses in this area are at their busiest. Um, but you can see these are pretty large chunks of unused parking, and if we are able to right-size, we could better use the space for something else, something like businesses along Nine Mile. Maybe even a drive-through, um, right when you come off of the expressway. And, um, this is even space that's large enough to fill, um, multifamily housing and still accommodate the parking for those housing units. And then, I just wanted to show you too that it's basically, um, equates to a single-family lot, which could also be used as green space. Or we could even throw in some landscaping on this parking lot instead of being used for, once again, unused parking. And this can help to provide shade, it can help to mitigate creating urban heat islands throughout the city. Um, and so we feel as though this is a pretty, um, big issue, not just on Nine Mile, but also on 10 Mile and other commercial corridors. So this is an example, um, of the Big Lots CBS property right off of 10 Mile. You can see once again, there are large chunks of unused parking spaces that could be used to bring further businesses along a main road like 10 Mile. Um, it could be used to fulfill our vision of bringing mixed-use development into the city. So we just wanna make sure that moving forward, that especially larger businesses, or when there's a congregation of businesses, that they can share their parking rather than each having to meet their own parking requirement.
This actually makes sense, that last one that you did, not just because that's my street, uh, but it is a horribly underutilized parking lot in the very front. And that would be a great spot for an outlaw building of some sorts. The problem with the parking on the side of the business is in the summertime, you have a lot of, uh, baseball leagues and football leagues and things like that, and they do park over there. So there might be a little concern there. But this is a good, this is a good opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah, especially along, like I said, those, like those main corridors, like you said, 10 Mile. And then out to looking at the DDA area, so this is from, this is pulled from the analysis, um, conducted by AEW, uh, the engineering firm that works with the city. And the table shows it corresponds by color and letter with the areas of the map. And so they studied the use, um, like the parking demand, and, um, they compared it to ITE, which is the Engine, uh, Institute of Transportation Engineers. And compared it to their studies and their analysis of what's actually recommended and used parking in this, uh, parking cities throughout the nation. And so from their study, they identified that, um, on average, there is a surplus in each of the four, uh, corners of the DDA. And there's quite a large surplus, like if you look at B, and once again, that's a strip mall with, um, a lot of variety of businesses that are grouped together, there is a surplus of about 400 spaces. So we could have even fit more businesses into that area had so much parking not been required. And so that's why we want to talk about how we can right-size our parking and add for greater flexibility and what those benefits might bring. So the way that we went about our analysis was we compared East Point's current standards to, once again, ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That provides a summary of the national standards and what is actually used. And most of their research comes from high-traffic areas on, um, in states like New York and California. So, um, so it's not even, again, more small towns, but high-traffic areas and their average use. And then we also compared it to regional municipalities, and one of ones that we highlighted on this slide right here is Oak Park. Um, but we also looked at other cities like St. Grishor's, Clinton Township, um, we looked at a ton. Harbor Woods, yeah, a bunch of municipalities in the area, to then provide some recommendations on how, um, what are some necessary parking requirements that we should have, but, you know, still allow for some flexibility. And we'll talk about more of our recommendations when we look at the steering committee packet from November, but this is just a general overview of some of our thought behind this. And so the benefits of right-sizing is that you can accommodate more businesses in smaller areas of land, you can allow for more diverse land uses, and you can increase the aesthetics, beauty, and green spaces throughout the city. Some additional benefits, and this is actually brought, put together by one of our colleagues, but to summarize really quick, um, you can encourage more new businesses through reoccupancy. So, for example, I'm gonna show a photo here, and these are vacant storefronts along Nine Mile that have few parking spots in the rear. Um, and currently, based on parking standards, by use, there's very few types of businesses that can come in based on, um, the parking. This is the block right at, by Felicia, um, the restaurant there. And so, again, we don't want parking to be a barrier, if a business or an office space thinks that three spaces is sufficient for their business, they should be allowed to occupy even though our current, um, parking minimum is five spaces, or six spaces, something like that. But if they only need three spaces, we can then, you know, better fill in businesses along the vacant stores fronts. Another benefit is that it lowers cost, um, for building. And so this summarizes that one surface space costs about $5,000, um, and then versus landscaping costs for that same area, which would be about $4,000. And so it's about a thousand dollar difference, but when you add up, you know, additional spaces, that starts to accumulate in savings. So it really can yield quite a bit of saving for businesses. Um, and it also, the third point says bring more green space and open space. Additionally, it can lower infrastructure costs by reducing the amount of stormwater runoff that accumulates, runs off into our roads, that deteriorates roads and pipes faster, and even could potentially contribute to the pollution of our lake during high rains, when we're, you know, overwhelming our stormwater system and then the combined sewer overflow goes into the lake. And then the last point is that it adds more choices in the market. So we allow for greater flexibility of businesses, and we can be more business-friendly and attract more diverse, uh, business types. So why we recommend a procedural review over a variance in some cases is that a variance can take, you know, quite a bit of time, and, you know, it requires us to assemble the zoning board of appeals. Um, and really, this will just delay a business license application process, which is, can be costly for the business, and it establishes a barrier to them, especially if they just wanna reoccupy. So our proposed solution, and again, we'll talk about this later, is that in some cases, we can allow for an administrative waiver when it's some, a minor change. Um, but variances such as, uh, or a change greater than five spaces that may require a variance. And then the third point, um, is that we really strongly recommend shared parking agreements to avoid what is occurring along Nine Mile right now, where you have a vast space of paved parking that's not constantly used throughout the day. So you can have an office, um, space that's used during the day paired with residential or something that is parking overnight, for example. So it can contrast when the peak demand times your parking lot, and they can complement each other and save space. And for some case studies here. Sorry, I dropped this. All right, case studies, so to highlight some in Michigan, there are already places that are, um, reviewing and removing their parking minimums. Um, there's actually even a couple cities in Michigan that have set parking maximums. But to highlight a few, one would be Traverse City, they've removed parking minimums for residential areas, citywide, regional commercial districts, and properties that are 500 feet with, um, distance to a public transit center. Dearborn has eliminated parking minimums in their west downtown district, and East Course has, just, uh, as of last year, eliminated their parking minimums throughout the city, and they've set maximums. And, um, in October, there was a question about, are the places that have removed parking minimums one where the city provides municipal parking lots? And the answer is in some cases, yes, like Dearborn, for example, in their west downtown district, they do have municipal structures, um, or public parking structures. But in places like E Course and many of the other cities, like even Traverse City and their regional commercial districts, they do not. But they allow the business to have the flexibility to decide within, you know, a certain limit, the amount of parking that they need. And then this is just an example from the article that Morris Hunt, Auburn, Maine, they experienced a lot of business closures, unfortunately, due to COVID-19 economic downturn. And so they saw this as an opportunity to remove additional barriers, especially for small businesses to come in. Um, and because that they moved, removed parking minimums, they've been able to attract more businesses and even people to come in to their downtown area to keep it, um, being a vibrant place. And with that, just to summarize, the look and the feel of a city is important. Allowing for flexibility in parking will reduce empty paved lots and allow for more interesting, attractive land uses. It'll increase the quality of life, enhance economic opportunity, or economic development opportunity in East Point. And with that, are there any questions?
Commission?
I have a question. So those cities that were listed as examples are largely built out already. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you know, reflect how that would work in East Point. If we had, if we removed our, our limits, right, and then you have a building that, I don't know, has two parking spots, the prior code would have required 10 or 20 for that business. Doesn't that shift, so if you actually have 15 people that are parking for that business, doesn't that shift the burden then to people that have their own private lots? Where are those people gonna park? So they're gonna park either on the streets, not adjacent to the, to the building, and/or they're gonna park in other private parking lots that those people maintain, they do, they have for their businesses. So I'm trying to understand, you know, I'm trying to be flexible and understand that, that seems like a challenge. What do you think?
Definitely, that's a good question. So if it is a business that needs, if they've identified that they need 15 spaces, but this vacant, pre-existing building only has two, um, that would be a great example of a shared parking agreement. So they would identify the need ahead of time and go to those neighboring businesses and say, does anyone have available parking during these times? And then they could enter a shared parking agreement. So it would have to be discussed ahead of time. And, you know, in our proposed recommendations as well, we do still set certain minimums, especially to make sure that there's parking for employees. And, um, there's not gonna be a spillover effect like we just talked about, based on, especially if it's a certain retail spaces that are higher volume retail, that there, there are still some minimums, they're just not as demanding. And then also, again, it allows them for the flexibility to enter a shared parking agreement. Or if they have good reason, they could come to the city and say, you know, I really only need two, three spaces. Can you review my case to determine if it's, if I, if I'm allowed to occupy this building?
No, it's interesting, we had a case about a year, year and a half ago, where, uh, an applicant was going to, was applying to take over an existing space for an event hall, and that building had zero parking spots. You know, and so we're talking, I don't know how many spots they would have needed, 15, 75, I don't know. So it just, it shifts a burden somewhere else that seems problematic in ways. I also think, you know, there's improvements that could be made by reducing the requirements. I was struggling a little bit with zero, zero parking spots, so.
I'd like to ask a question too. I know we have to kind of straddle the fence here, because we definitely don't wanna restrict new businesses, um, with so stringent parking, and there's not a whole lot of parking area around, um, some of these buildings in, in East Point. But some of those wider areas where we were saying where we put in structures and parking places, and we kind of compare it to where's Dearborn, but they do have quite a bit of municipal parking. And behind a lot of their strips, there's parking behind those strips. Something like you even see in, um, Ferndale, you may have a strip, but then there's like a parking lot. And if we take some of these areas that we wanna really make dense, I think we should consider at least a municipal place to park. It should always be a challenge, but I don't know if we have any spaces in those designated areas, but it'd be great to, if we minimize it, at least you make a parking place. I know we looked at the downtown district and it was unused parking, but that was kind of concentrated around the nine, Grashit area. But if we like building out on some of the other corridors, how are we gonna address parking in those areas as well?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the pack, the steering packet here to jump ahead and show you some of the information, 'cause there are some, well, taking a step back, that is good foresight, like, you know, and that's why, as we invite more mixed-use buildings, again, parking's always gonna be a consideration, that's part of the, the factor. There are some designated public parking locations already, and that's something that the city plans to, um, continue to oversee. So I will pull that up for you in a second here, so we can look at it together, as well as, um, yeah, further information about the specifics of the parking changes that we recommend.
Chair? I, would this be a comfortable transition for us to go into the parking standards of the unfinished business?
Just one second.
Okay.
Commissioner Lubeck had a comment, and then we'll go on to that.
Comment or question? Administrative approval for up to five parking spaces, is that correct?
That is what is proposed.
Okay. So we have a business that we say should have 10 spaces. They believe we should have, they need five. And we could administratively approve that. Meanwhile, down the street on the next corner, we say they need 100 parking spaces, and they say we can do this with 94, and they have to come for a variance. So here you can have a 50% variation by administrative approval in one case, but you would need a ZBA decision to have a change of 6%. It doesn't seem equitable. I mean, I understand what you're trying to get to, but I'm looking at it from a different, different standpoint.
Uh, that is a great point, and we just considered for ease of, um, access, number of spaces and not percentage of parking. So maybe that's something we can explore, and Chair, or, um, Planning Commissioner Lubeck, if you're interested in, in this research with us, we can talk it through with you. Um, but the actual idea that we have proposed on the planning commission, um, packet for the zoning ordinance is not a variance. Um, so staff would be, is proposed, what's proposed. So staff would be, is proposed, what's proposed. Staff would allow five or less spaces. A modification of five or less spaces. And then the applicant, if they seek greater modifications, they would actually come to the Planning Commission for six or more spaces. So if that helps, they wouldn't have to go to the ZBA and seek a variance. They would come to the Planning Commission and seek a reduction in spaces. That would be the Planning Commission's police powers. But we can look into percentages over spaces, if you're interested in that.
I guess what I, what I'm looking at here is, having a difference of 50% of the parking is going to be far more impactful than having a difference of 6% in the example that I had used. And whether that's approved by administrative or it's actually a good idea if we're doing site plan approval to allow the Planning Commission to have that flexibility. I know in the past, we've changed a lot of ordinances that has granted more flexibility to the Planning Commission. But if you understand what I'm saying, when you make a 50% difference in the parking required by administrative approval, but you force a 6% change to go through a more rigorous approval process, it doesn't seem equitable. And personally, yes, I would rather probably see it go by a percentage rather than by just a hard and fast number.
Okay.
And although I do understand it's going to be more burdensome on somebody that's needing lesser parking, maybe to meet that standard.
Chair. So we have this up, and it seems like we're leading into this conversation.
Before we go on, Commissioner Brol has a comment.
Well, yeah, and I realize it feels like we're at a different spot than we move, we move forward in this conversation. But since we're asking this question, I was just wondering, how did we arrive at five? Was there any math behind that, any science samples? Or, I mean, is it just that's felt right? How did we get at five?
Chair. So the answer is, my colleagues and I brainstormed together, and we thought about a reasonable number that we would be able to address administratively, and that's five or less spaces. And the purpose behind that is because we want small businesses not to be impeded by over-parking requirements. Because as we've read and learned from Richey's presentation and read in the articles that I submitted, not one planner or Planning Commission can determine the right amount of spaces per business. It's somewhat arbitrary, because we don't have the, the research in the world yet. All, the research is really based off bigger cities. But smaller towns and cities have, have taken more strides to right-size, right-size parking, as you can see on the map.
Thank you. I guess we should move on to unfinished business then, so you can talk about what you want to talk about next. Moving on to unfinished business, item A, Ms. Brashinsky.
Thank you. If you don't mind, let's enter our parking discussion, since it's on our, our heads here. And we have a proposed, we have proposed parking minimum standards. These are uses or development that do not require parking minimums up here. And I just want to say, Commissioner Brol, I under, I like it how you brought the perspective of there will be a burden shifted. That is, it's, it's good to think about in terms of negative and positive externalities of what our policy is going to do to the community. However, our point of the whole presentation is not that there'll be, there's, there's not enough parking. It's that East Point is perhaps overparked. So we have too much supply for the little demand. So we have to increase demand or reduce supply in order to be at our net neutral. So that's why we have developed very thoughtful policy where we won't require parking minimums. And we are, we thought, and we want to tease out a little bit more of the negative, maybe cost, maybe the burden to the city through the policy with you guys. But we think we, we did a pretty good job here with these four types of development here. So number one, the first example of a development that would not require parking minimums, this is all proposed, is a commercial development downtown. We have the DDA study, we see the DDA, downtown is overparked. So we think that commercial development does not need any parking, more parking minimums. And another reason why commercial development does not need parking minimums, this is for new development of commercial buildings in the downtown, is because developers have more risk when they enter the, a project. And so they will assess how much parking they need for their, their target population. And they know the number more than planners and planning commissions can ever know about how much parking they actually require. Sometimes they like to overpark, which is why cities are starting to input, install maximums, because developers want to have a bunch of parking available. So that may be, is a topic of conversation as we move forward with our relationship together and how we navigate parking throughout these years.
I want to throw something out there before we go deeper into this. At one point, we were a much larger city. And we are overparked because we've gone from being a much larger city to a much smaller city. We also had businesses in the city that appealed to every demographic, young, old, black, white, you name it. There were businesses, prior to 94 going in, you had to go through East Point. And people were shopping at grocery stores that we had in the city, and shoe stores, and things like that. So we're overparked because we've shrunk, first off. We're also overparked because we don't have a lot of businesses that attract a bunch of people to stay in the city and spend a lot of money, as we did in years past. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there as you dive further into this.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Chair?
Sure.
Okay. Mentioning the parking in the DDA area. A portion of that parking study was actually done on a private parking lot, wasn't it?
There are public and private spaces that were assessed.
Okay. And I, I'm trying to find the words to explain what I'm thinking about here, that perhaps we need to look at how we treat parking in different areas. Like, if you're in the, in the DDA, then probably all parking, which previously had been private, maybe needs to be viewed more as public, one way or another. And allowing that parking to, because we're intending for it to serve the entire area. And I think there are some people, probably at this table, who would make a case in point for you that there is not enough parking on grassed, on a given Saturday in June.
Chair. So I, I was going to say, Commissioner, that city staff is working on connecting with the business owners, especially along our four corners, our, our central business district, to see if we can use their private lots for quasi-public uses. Or even, we're exploring if the DDA, I mean, I'm not trying to jump ahead of myself here, because I have to ask the DDA. But if the DDA would be interested in leasing some spaces, especially during the Nine Mile construction. So Nine Mile businesses would be able to say, you can go and park at the Rite Aid pharmacy, or, I mean, that's probably the best example, unless they want to cross to the Eastbrook Commons. So we, the staff administration is already actively, we're actively seeking shared parking agreements for, to help the businesses in our downtown area and Nine Mile. Do you mind if I continue?
Please.
Thank you. So that's one example. If you see, we did not include residential development in the downtown area. We don't believe that we want to yet reduce or eliminate parking minimums for residential development, because residents will use the parking every day. And we just want to make sure the city has a little bit more oversight. So that's where we are a little bit more cautious. Even though this policy is pretty cautious, we're leaving a little extra cautious, because we don't want city council to be bombarded with residents who are issuing their, airing their grievances about people parking in front of their house every day. So we've been very mindful about that, for the benefit of city administration. The second idea is not to require accessory dwelling, or parking for accessory dwelling units and affordable housing units. This is all because these people might not need parking. But also, accessory dwelling units are addition to the driveway, or one resident already. And affordable housing units might be a little closer to transit and might be looking to walk, walk or take transit to their place of work. So these two items are a little bit clever and based off of other case studies that we referenced in the American Planning Association article. These are some best practices that they did. And then the last one that we're super excited about, and this is East Point original, groundbreaking new policy. This is based off an MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, idea, but we created the policy for it. This is to eliminate parking minimums for small businesses. And the way we determine small businesses is will be for people who are at an occupancy load, or businesses have an occupancy load of 50 people or less. And that's determined by parcel size, and we team up with the fire marshal to understand occupancy load.
Anybody have any questions thus far?
Could you clarify for me accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah, that's a type of structure such as a garage or addition to a property. It can be a connecting structure or detached structure that allows for people to live in, in addition to their single-family home. So it's known colloquially as a granny flat. Mother-in-law suite, colloquially.
Okay, so you're saying that would make garage apartments acceptable?
Yes, we have discussed this in the Steering Committee and at Planning Commission. And Planning Commission and Steering Committee have both voted that accessory dwelling units are permissible in the R1 and R2 in our, no, MU1, MU2 districts.
Okay. So I did have my head screwed on straight by my interpretation of that.
Thank you for clarifying, I really appreciate that. Thank you for clarifying and asking for a definition. I'm sorry, I did not provide that.
Moving on.
So what are your thoughts on this? Are you comfortable with this policy?
Commission? Thoughts, concerns?
I'm not comfortable with it. I can't, I can't bridge that you can have an issue where someone else is paying to have their parking lot that's private property, and they're, you know, they're the ones that have to refurb that parking lot. And you can have people parking on their lots because their, their business doesn't have adequate parking. That's the overflow, that's the end result in certain situations. Going back to my example that I brought above the event hall. Where are those 75 people, where would those 75 people be? Where would they park if they were in, in the, in the DDA? Where would they park, you know? So I have a problem with it. That's private land. And we're, we're creating a policy where we're promoting someone else parking on their private land.
Can I ask a question, Chair? Just curious, is that where the shared parking agreements will come into play? That they will get that in advance, so using that private, public space before they can just assume when?
They don't have to, there's no minimum requirements, right?
No, I think we have, I'm sorry, Chair.
Am I, am I misunderstanding it, though?
I think we have a misunderstanding, miscommunication. So we are not eliminating all parking minimums throughout the city. We are just tactfully, tactfully reducing or eliminating parking minimums for these four options that we see that will not have a cost negative or a negative impact for the city. And when we say that we're eliminating parking minimums, it's not like we're eliminating parking spaces. We're just eliminating the city's review over requiring parking for these spaces. There is one, already existing parking for the small businesses. And then, two, the developer will still provide parking spaces for their affordable housing units as they deem fit for their market, and also for the commercial development in the downtown area. And I just want to add as a subpoint here, the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors already voted to eliminate parking minimums through their entire DDA. We took that a step above and said, well, let's just eliminate commercial development, not residential, not all development, just to be a little bit more cautious. But when you say event hall, we still have our standards for event hall. This is exactly what we don't want to see. When businesses have a higher occupancy, event halls will have a hundred, at least, occupancy? A hun, a hundred or less, okay, I'm on it. They have to follow through with the parking minimums.
If they're, if they're in the commercial development downtown, they would have to follow through?
We don't allow event halls in the downtown.
Okay.
We actually did allow one.
Well, one, and they're non, well, they would be non-conforming, which we'll get into in a bit. And Chair, can I add?
I did understand that, by the way. I understood everything you said, like that was part of my assumption, I know that, so, yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, does. Any other questions? Moving on?
Okay. Okay. Flexible parking requirements. So another idea that we had is to be flexible for when we require parking. And so, these are the different, number one through six are the different areas where we can add parking or not, or be, offer some flexibility or not. So number one, of course, is the standard. We would require parking, off-street parking within the same lot. That's just a given standard of what we would do for a city, or for a development when they're, they require parking. The second is, we would allow some flexibility and count some on-street parking spaces along the public parking lane corresponding to the lot frontage. That's that side-street residential parking, but only some spaces within a certain distance. That's what we're teasing out right now. The specifics is what we're teasing out for the draft ordinance. Three, we would provide, we'd be able to provide a adjacent shared parking agreement, which we already do within the city. Four, the project would be able to ask Planning Commission or city administration for a waiver, and we can go into the different waiver requirements on the next page. Five, we'd be able to offer space reduction if they offer bicycle parking. And six, we would offer reduction if they were located near transit stops. How do you guys feel about these ideas in affording a flexibility within our parking requirement section?
Any feedback?
I'm just going to say it, I'm looking at number five. And I'm kind of wondering why we're not making bicycle parking a parking requirement in certain areas. I'll say it one thought, near bus stops. I would like to, you know, if we're going to have a bus stop, not everybody wants to take their bicycle, throw it on the front of the bus, and take it with them. They just want to have the bicycle to get to the bus stop and then back home. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just kind of thinking it is such a good idea, maybe we want to look at actually requiring it in some business areas and some transit stops. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but that was my thought.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, thank you for the feedback. We always appreciate your voices, and we'll take that in consideration. So the, the next topic of consideration is on page four. Do you agree with our parking standards? So number one, should we require a public hearing for a shared parking agreement? And we all know the, the steps it takes to apply for a shared, or a public hearing. The applicant has to come in and pay their additional fee. We have to send their notices, notify everyone within 300 feet, and then come before you, the Planning Commission, and ask for the, or will, and come before you and enforce our, our, our project or whatever we're requiring for a public hearing. The reason why I say this is I'm, I'm trying to find the negatives to this proposed policy here. here. So I had the conversation with, Chair, were you, Commissioner, were you guys here when I discussed the Vincetta Garage case study? I think I saved it for you guys, right? Has anyone heard this? Maybe it was the steering committee. Okay, so Vincetta Garage is a restaurant Berkeley on Woodward between 11 and 12, and they have no parking, and it's a restaurant. So what they did, and I contacted the economic development director there to see what's going on, how this happened. I want to avoid any parking chaos in the city of East Point, because I don't want a burden on city administration or city officials or planning commission. So they entered a shared parking agreement with a neighboring user, and the shared parking agreement user pulled out eventually in a, after a couple years of the agreement. But then also, people never used the shared parking. They constantly parked on the residential streets. So all of these residents came to planning commission for five years complaining about all of the people parking in front of their house, even though it is public parking. But we don't want that in the city. So an idea that I had out of that conversation is to require a public hearing every time we like to issue a shared parking agreement. So that would leave the city administration would be able to say, okay, well, we have public hearing for everyone to air their concerns at this date, so they didn't show, and if you didn't show up, well, we had the opportunity. The other side of that is it is a little bit more tedious, and if we're trying to be flexible, then this might not be the right process. However, we are affording flexibility in other ways, so it might still be the good policy.
So, if I recall correctly, we about, within the last year, we had discussions about shared parking agreements, and if I remember correctly, every year when a business goes to get their business permit or occupancy permit, I think it's business permit, part of that process is that they have to have a shared parking agreement. If that's what they originally had, they have to have the appropriate parking. So that's, what you're saying happened at Vincetta wouldn't happen here, because if somebody entered and they, and they had to have that parking, they entered a shared parking agreement, and that parking agreement cancels, they wouldn't be able to renew their business license here in the city of East Point. Isn't that correct? We wouldn't have that problem.
City attorney? Would the shared parking agreement run with the land?
In my experience, it does run with the land.
Okay.
You can usually say that right in the agreement itself, but generally those are not. And a reported with registered deeds, in that case, it would be a common area of the property. So anybody purchasing that adjacent property would know that there is this parking agreement that was previously admitted.
Isn't there a second part to that Vincetta Garage story? That you didn't share with us?
There's more to the story, but I'm not sure how relevant it is to the topic. Sorry, Chair.
Well, just as I remember it, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Vincetta Garage also bought a couple of neighboring houses with the intent of building their own parking lot, and those same crabby neighbors showed up en masse to tell them, we don't want a parking lot here either.
Chair, they actually were not allowed to build a parking lot because the zoning ordinance doesn't allow parking lots for accessory, well, just, they didn't allow parking lots in that zone. I'm pretty sure Zone R1, so residential districts don't just allow parking lots as a primary use. I don't know how much detail you want, but, okay.
All right. Any other questions or concerns about this? Ms. Julinski?
I just have a question, kind of since you brought up Vincetta. One that comes to mind, and I'm not sure of all the details of it, but one I can think of is the funeral home on Kelly. So their parking lot is always full. They use the parking lot across the street in the residential streets on both sides of the funeral home. I don't know if they have a shared agreement, but isn't that the same kind of case? And what if it's an existing? Do we, how do you handle that?
But isn't that parking owned by the city on Kelly Road? Because if it's owned by the city, then they could park, in theory, they could park in that strip center. Not so much while the, and the side streets are public, but I believe.
Well, I understand that, but again, you had the neighbors in Berkeley complaining. I'm just trying.
I, I don't know that that's actually city parking, or the city is allowing those businesses to have parking in the city right of way because of the nine-mile, or nine-mile, the Kelly Road interceptor sewers that run right underneath those parking lots along with water mains. But having lived in a house and the front window looked out on the back of that funeral home, more than once I've had to go over there and say, hey, I don't know who's here, but somebody has parked across my driveway, and I need to either enter or exit it. And they managed to find the owner of the car in a short time span because they knew what the option was. But I don't know about the ownership of that, but you were definitely right, especially the vacant southern half of that strip mall to the north there.
In our packet, I don't know if you saw this, she has a map with public parking locations. It's on the very back page of your packet, and that would indicate that it's public parking locations. So I think that kind of answers some questions, even though I'm still trying to understand why we have public parking in that one area, but that's irrelevant.
What was the question?
No, I was talking about the last page on the packet where you've got the public parking. Kind of answers the question that. All right. Any other questions so we can have Ms. Brzezinski? Next?
Okay. So the next two items, just discussed if we should grant or allow administration to grant waivers in parking of five or less. We talked about that. We'd like to pursue perhaps percentages of development, or maybe consider occupancy. Tease that out a little bit more. Is that what I'm hearing?
Percentages? Is that what we were discussing?
Well, that was my question. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it.
Ms. Mignez?
As I said, five spaces could be 50 percent, and five spaces could be less than 5 percent.
Ms. Mignez, I think you have a question?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say that while I like the simplicity of just saying five spaces, but three spaces and four, I think there is merit to having more extensive language that would allow it to be based upon percentage as opposed to a number so that you can keep it equitable, so that no matter what business comes along, no one can come back later and say, well, this is unfair because, you know, said business only needed this many, and I'm only requesting, you know, X number. So I think percentage is a more equitable way to go about it, but I would also encourage maybe digging a little deeper in adding language so that it keeps, still keeps it where administration can administer without everything having to keep coming back before the commission. So if that makes sense.
Completely, thank you. And I'm already brainstorming over here, but I won't, I won't share it.
Save it.
I'll save it. A little teaser.
If I, and if I could add, Chair. And that may be a place too where Mr. Albright, as I tasked him, could add in with some fun language that gives that if-then clause, you know, just to keep it simple. That's all.
Attorneys use fun language?
Rich does.
We've been known to do so. On occasion.
I don't want to see that.
All right, Ms. Brzezinski, please.
Thank you. Chair, should we move on to reviewing of the zoning map?
I'm leaving this in your hands.
Sorry?
I'm leaving this in your hands. What do you feel is pertinent?
Okay, so we have our zoning map in front of you. This has been through several iterations. The first round is through administration, the second, actually, we presented this to the planning commission last month, and then we presented it to our steering committee. And this is what we have as our proposed draft zoning map. The steering committee reviewed the new districts and discussed several parcels along 10 Mile. So we changed up the zoning to reflect, I think we just had some inconsistencies, and we wanted to update the neighborhood mixed-use district along 10 Mile. We also discussed the 9 Mile and I-94 corridor, and allowed more regional uses over in that area. And then the Kelly Road corridor, just made sure that we were, I think we added some regional uses to our, the corridors, the intersections of 9 and Kelly and 10 and Kelly and 8 and Kelly. So do you have any edits to this map?
That poor man that's living in his car at 9 and Grash is going to be displaced at some point. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? All right. Commissioner Lubek has a question.
Actually, he's allowing me to go in reverse. On the previous chart that you had with the parking standards, the single-family detached dwelling, it had been two units, your two parking spaces, you're now recommending one. And it's on page five. And maybe it's just a pet peeve of mine to look at garages full of junk, driveways in yards that are empty, and streets full of cars. If anything, in my personal opinion, is we should probably require more off-street parking for single-family dwellings, because I think our standard was developed in a day when a family had one car. And now you have families that have two cars, three kids, and each kid gets a car, and then dad's got his extra car, and then the...
Granny's living in the garage.
All right, so maybe, maybe it's just my pet peeve, but we require two, and I guess you could require 10, and that's still not going to prevent people from leaving their garages full of garbage, their backyards and driveways empty, and still filling up the street with multiple cars.
Good point.
Sorry for wasting your time.
So, this policy is created for, I mean, this, it would only be enforceable if it was new construction. Lot, East Point's already built out. We already have our single-family homes. We already have the driveways. Honestly, if the driveways are full of junk, that seems like a code enforcement challenge, so I would urge you to call our dentist.
No, I didn't say the driveways. I said the garages.
Okay, well, there's an eye sore in the community. It seems like it's a code enforcement challenge, but my point is that these, the driveways or houses are already built out, so the driveways are built out to a capacity to allow for one or multiple cars in their driveway. And additionally, people want houses, so developers are going to build houses with driveways because people drive cars, and the developer knows how much their market needs in terms of parking space, parking capacity, so they would build the parking lot, I'm sorry, the driveway as big as their market needs. We just say we don't want to overpark, requiring over amount of spaces.
I understand that this is for new development, but I think we need to be consistent, and if we're allowing existing residents, or if we're saying existing residents are okay with two per dwelling, I think new construction should say the same thing. It should be a fair and consistent application. Sorry.
Thanks, Ms. We're looking for the East Point of tomorrow. I'm part of, as a steering, we came up with the one, just because they added the dwelling, not to add additional parking. So I think it was exclusive to the fact that if they're going to convert the garage into housing, it did not increase parking. They still only got the one. And again, this is as we're thinking of East Point moving forward. You know, a lot of people are going to be grandfathered in, but it's going to change, so we can't stay consistent to yesteryear if we're trying to be progressive. That would be my, that was our thought process in our steering.
My progressive thinking is in a slightly, perhaps, different idea. I see the East Point of tomorrow where we don't build houses on slabs or crawl spaces, but they're required to have basements, and they should be required to have an accessory structure, also known as a garage. That's, just throwing that out there, that, you know, there are many different visions of what the progressive future of East Point looks like.
I'm going to have to move over to East Point. I got no garage.
Well, you'd be grandfathered in.
People might be.
But when you sell that second lot next door to your house, they would have to put a garage on it.
Put a container home on it. All right. Side bar over. Any other questions on this? Okay. Yes?
Just for a point of clarification, when we're talking about the number of spaces, we're talking about the parking on the street, parking not the number of spaces put in the driveway. Am I understanding that correctly? Right?
Yes, this is true. You can put as many cars as you want in your driveways.
Right. So if our goal as a city, if we're making all these other improvements around the city to not have overparking, why would we not be consistent with that in our planning even for future residential development? And I understand, like, current homeowners whose houses are already built out have the two spaces, but if we're planning for the future and we're trying to take the city as a whole in a particular direction of not overusing parking, why would we not be consistent? That's just a, it's more of a question not meant to be answered, but just more food for thought. Why would we not plan to be consistent in the same way when it comes to new construction of residential homes?
I, I love what Ms. Naylor has said about why we were, why they're proposing one for new construction, because our streets are littered with cars, and our streets come a couple weeks when the snow hits, are going to be littered with cars, and it's a danger. And you have people that are getting so close to other people's approaches, trying to get into their driveway becomes a nightmare. I completely love the idea of no more than one vehicle on the street with new construction. My concern is, is it, is it consistent? Is it going to be fair and consistent with the little old lady who lives next door for 50 years, and she's got her grandchildren that live with her, and they've got two spots, and somebody moves in, builds a brand-new house on a vacant lot, and they can only put one in, but yet maybe they have three or four people living in the house? So that's where my concern is. I think we need to be fair and consistent, so.
Okay, I just heard two comments that these people were thinking completely opposite of mine. I was looking at that chart as, those... I was looking at that chart as those spaces being off-street parking. And it sounds like the people to either side of me were interpreting that as on-street parking spaces. So maybe we need to get a clarification. What are we talking about?
We're talking about off-street parking.
Okay.
So there would be one required off-street parking, which means like driveway parking spot, not on the street, off-street parking, one required off-street parking spot, which would be in the driveway or the garage. We are not enforcing or regulating on-street parking. It is public parking. It's a public right-of-way. It's a city street. Anyone's allowed to park there. I'm allowed to park there. You're allowed to park there.
So that being said, that's the clarification that I was asking for. And that being said, I agree with the chair from the standpoint that when it comes to off-street parking, why would we reduce that? And I'm thinking of that from the standpoint of a resident with a family who in the future will have drivers, hopefully, several years from now, but could be much sooner than that. And also from the standpoint of someone who religiously parks on my property and has a neighbor who does not. And when it comes time for snow removal, yes, I agree, it is quite annoying if the vehicles are not moved. So I would argue that we should be keeping with the two per dwelling. I don't think, this is the Motor City, or we're at least close enough to it. We're, I don't see us reducing as much as we might be increasing green space, as much as I might love walking and biking and all of that. We are accustomed to being in vehicles in this area of the Midwest. I don't see us changing that anytime super soon. This isn't, you know, the East Coast, New York, where everybody, you know, goes by public transit. We use vehicles here, and our children have grown up looking forward to driving their own vehicles. So I don't see us pulling back on that as much as adding. That's all.
Thank you for giving us clarity, though, on that.
Thank you. I'm happy to have you.
All right, let's kick it back. Let's get this rolling.
All right, we're going to move ahead now on to the land uses that are permitted in the various zoning districts. We did talk about this at the last Planning Commission meeting, but we wanted to go over it again because there's been some changes that were recommended by the steering committee. And one of those being event halls. We have now allowed it in MU3, the regional mixed-use, as well as MU1, which is neighborhood mixed-use, but only on 8-mile, 10-mile, and Grashit. And if you actually look to the zoning map that we just looked at as well, you can see that there are some parcels in more regional areas like Grashit that we zoned as MU1, and that's why we allow for this special land use exemption. We also made a modification to bars and smoking lounges. They're the same sort of setup that we, by recommendation of steering committee, will allow bars in MU1, but special land use on Tofer, Beaconsfield, and Stevens. And this is because it's more neighborhood. So that way, neighbors can have the chance to force their concerns or give any feedback that they have in public review during the public hearings. And we also allowed it in the light residential, or light industrial area, L1, to allow for like breweries and distilleries in light industrial areas. We also changed drive-through facilities to permitted instead of special land use based on conversation steering committee. And then on the next page, again, we allowed microbrewery, distillery, winery as special land use in MU1. It's page four? Page four. And then at the bottom of page four, we kept auto-related uses as special land use only in the MU3, regional mixed-use areas. Any questions about this section? Or comments?
I kind of wish we had this about two years ago when we were being deluged with event halls. It would have been nice to have this too. So thank you.
And hopefully this addresses, again, parking concerns based on where these uses are even allowed. All right, so hearing no questions.
Any questions from the commission before I? Anything? Looks good to me.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Okay, we'll move on to schedule regulations. Great, thanks, Brigitte. Do you mind putting it to page seven of the steering committee packet? Thank you. Before you, we discussed this in our steering committee, oh, no, we will discuss this in our steering committee, so you have a sneak peek. By the way, everyone's invited. I'll do an announcement. Everyone's invited to the December 15th Steering Committee meeting. I'll let you guys know when it is later, but I just want to let you know, planning commission's feedback's always welcome. The main thing we want to highlight here in the schedule of regulations, as you can see, it regulates minimum lot sizes, maximum height of structures, setbacks, so it's the distance between the property line and the building front edge, or side building line, maximum impervious lot coverage, so that's the amount of lot coverage that's allowed to have a building on it and the parking lot, maximum units. So these are all the different dimensional requirements of a project. I really want feedback from you today on the maximum height of structures. Make sure we got that one right. So that's the second column, or third column, if you consider the district.
I don't have a question on height. R1, low-density residential. Minimum lot width 50 feet. Can I ask what the rationale behind that was?
Our dimensions are based off of the existing regulations and also existing widths of residential lots. So that's how we got our, not only the minimum lot size, but also, not only the area, but the width.
Okay. I'm going to question that. Because back before Mr. Albright's tenure, the minimum lot size was 50 feet. It was during the building boom. We had a number of people who were in a section of the city where the lots were plotted at 80 feet. And a lot of those had been split into 40-foot lots, and single-family residential had been built on them. And literally, every zoning board meeting had a couple of these lot splits to allow them to build on 40-foot lots. And the city council at that time, and I will reserve commentary at this point, decided, well, then we should just allow building on 40-foot lots. And now you're saying it, we've got 50-foot lots. I'm wondering where, did something get lost somewhere? And I see somebody has walked over near the microphone, probably to answer this seemingly bizarre question to everybody else.
Actually, I would disagree with the 50-foot, because we have a number of, we have a large number of lots that are 40-foot, and it's going to discourage building. And we do have entities interested in building. So my request would be that 40-foot, if there had previously been a structure on that lot. We, you know, we've demolished a number of buildings, a number of homes, and now the lots are basically unusable.
I think we could make provisions for that. I, now the commentary, I'll agree with the 50-foot lot. There's one of our esteemed zoning board, actually, chair at the time, made the comment, "The problem you have with 40-foot lots is your neighbor can hear you change your mind, because the houses seem to be crammed so close together."
Commissioner?
I could tell a lot of story about lot splits, but not the time or place for it.
Yes, Ms. Praschowski.
I think this can all be tied up, or tidied up, by everyone looking at the footnote 2. It's not square feet. It's footnote 2. And we allow for any lots that don't conform to the 50 feet, provided that they meet all the other dimensional structural requirements.
There you go. Fine print.
I mean, it can be confusing. My colleague just said it looked like square foot. So we'll make sure that the footnotes are letters.
Actually, I was just questioning why, that I knew they were allowed on 40. You're saying this is based on existing, and I'm seeing 50 there, and I'm going, wait a minute.
But we can change it to 40 if you're interested. This is all about feedback.
No, I'm okay. And I'm really okay with the footnote, because I think that solves both of the problems, and...
There you go. You're a problem solver. Next.
Does anyone have any thoughts on the maximum height? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. It's like I yelled into it. I didn't mean to do that. I don't know if I'm just confused, but, because I pulled up MUNICODE, the minimum lot width in our current ordinance says 50 feet. Am I wrong here? You're saying, I thought you were saying it's 40 right now?
What I am starting to find more and more when I look at that MUNICODE is somewhere along the lines, I think maybe when we re-codified everything, some stuff just didn't make it into it like it was supposed to.
This is also for new development, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember it well, because there was such an integral part of my life at that point in time that we were so busy doing this. And as much as I kicked and screamed, council decided they were going to do it anyway. And there were some significant downsides to that, or downsides to that, so.
Yeah, I just have a question.
Quick question on stories. Basement constitutes a story?
No, we were not considering basement as a story.
So in R1, you could have a three-story house?
Yes. Or a house up to 36 feet, if you want to consider that. That might be a little bitty.
50-foot ceiling type thing? Any other questions on that, then?
So you put the granny pad upstairs, upstairs.
Okay, so we're moving on from the schedule of regulations. Any other feedback? Thank you for all of your comments. Thanks for clarifying comments. I really appreciate the dialogue. Okay, so moving on. What's next on our agenda? Is it planned unit developments? All right. So we are really excited to present this proposed ordinance to you on page 12 of the steering committee packet. We actually just talked about this during our team meeting today at McKenna, and we notified our colleagues that we just created, the East Point team just created, this groundbreaking, great policy for the PUD component of a zoning ordinance. And we combined other different policies from different cities into this, and also added our creativity and best practices. So the goal of a PUD, or what a PUD, a planned unit development, provides to developer is some flexibility within the zoning ordinance. So flexibility in not having all the setbacks, maybe not having all of the parking, maybe not having, I don't know, some other, like, some other element or regulation in zoning ordinance. But instead, it allows flexibility to exchange for a higher quality, and I have this written here, a higher-quality development that fulfills the city's master plan goals and will provide a better overall project to the benefit of the community. So that is the goal of a planned unit development. It's used sparingly, and it's when the city really wants to enter a partnership with the project developer and have a more well-rounded project overall. Because sometimes we can't, all of our regulations can't fit within the box of a project. It's not neat and pretty all of the time. So sometimes we need some flexibility, but then we get a little bit better quality project. So let's go into the process. I think that'll be most helpful right now on page 13. This is where we see some differences between what we have today and what we are proposing to change. So what we have today only has two phases. It's basically just phase two and somewhat a phase three, and I'll go into that. We are proposing to have three phases. Phase one, by adding phase one, we add more options for people to get informed. So we have our optional applicant meeting with city staff in order to review criteria. And then we also have our introductory Planning Commission meeting, where no formal action will be taken. That's sample point three. It's just for the developer and the planning commissioners to meet and share information. So this process provides transparency and also reduces the cost and time spent on a project. So that's how we are improving the process today by adding phase one. And then phase two, right now, we require a final site plan in our zoning ordinance, or in the zoning ordinance today, we require a final site plan. Here, we're proposing to offer an eligibility plan, which is a little bit less information than the final site plan. And we do that because we want the developer to get all of their permissions in order. So they would come to the Planning Commission and the city council. That process is like a special land use. They would get their permissions, and then they would spend the extra money on engineering to tweak their final site plan and get everything right. So that's why we recommend adding the eligibility plan and stopping, using Planning Commission and city council as the final authority for the eligibility plan. But then, we change this again. We don't require the final site plan with all of the additional material to be presented at city council. We're requiring it only to be presented at Planning Commission, because Planning Commission has the background in planning. You have the police powers over a final site plan. City council does not need to be reviewing a final site plan. They just need to have final authority over the eligibility plan. So those are the three things that we change through the process to make it easier.
I want to stop you there. Any commentary from our commission on this? Thoughts? Because I'm in love with phase one. I think this eliminates a lot of problems before they become problems. Does anybody have any other? No? Okay. Interrupted. Move on.
Oh, I've got a comment to make on that. Phase three, where the Planning Commission will approve the site plan. I'm thinking of one that went very poorly in the city, because city council had the final stamp of approval on it. They did not take the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and we did not end up with what we were intending to have, and what council wanted to have, but they wanted to play nice. And there was something left out that had been promised. And in the end run, they weren't going to fulfill the promise and found out it's because it did not get put in the plan properly. And there was quite a bit of kickback from the Planning Commission that says if they're changing this, we need to have it in there specifically. And council was of the attitude, oh, no, we don't.
That was the site, the site plan? I know, you're talking about Oakwood Middle School.
Yeah, I'm talking about Oakwood and the community center that was promised.
Oh, okay.
That council, for whatever reason, would not listen to us and require it. And they found the weasel hole. And, and they, they found the weasel hole out of it, because we couldn't require them to do it.
Well, I like the fact that you've, you've shoveled in the holes.
Thank you. I think that's a great transition, Chair. Okay, into what planning commission has police power over, and that is requiring eligibility criteria and approval standards for all planned unit developments. So, planning commission can recommend approval, I guess city council does have final authority over any text amendments. But this is where we get to shine, and have the outright criteria that the planned unit development project would need to meet. So, this, um, this section, part three on page 14, also elevates the current planned unit development section, because we have elevated the criteria to be, um, more expansive, and therefore receive a better quality project for the, the city.
Great.
Yeah, thank you. We have specific questions on page 14 and 16, but if you have, if you'd like to tease out any of these categories for eligibility and approval standards, please let me know.
Does anybody have any questions on page 14? No? Alright.
Our specific question, Chair, is to understand what, how much, um, open space we would like to require in the planned unit development. City's staff, or planning staff, thought about requiring 10% of the land area to be open space? Is that a reasonable, I mean, again, it's kind of hard to estimate that, but, um, we wanted to bring that forward.
Okay, I'm going to ask this question, especially considering the earlier discussion tonight. Does parking qualify as open space?
No.
It's a hard question to answer, from the standpoint, every planned unit development is gonna be different, potentially. So it's, that, that's a very hard question, to put some sort of an answer to.
Do we want to put that kind of restriction on a planned unit development?
People who are putting a PUD in here and getting approved for it, are dropping significant amounts of money. And I just don't know if we want to shackle them with, with percentages of open space. Like, uh, the Deerfield project, prime example, they've got great open spaces, and they probably could have put a couple more houses in there. I don't know if, I don't know if we're looking to look forward. I just don't know if we should be shackling them with percentages.
I think the point of this is flexibility, so we don't want to restrict the flexibility in light of not having projects.
And actually, when you bring up Deerfield, that's a perfect example of a PUD. Where a lot of what they did there would not have normally been allowed. You had a large playfield there, that some of the residents were upset with having lost. And that open space that you see in front of it was the compromise on that. We really had a problem with some of the residents' understanding, we could either do it this way, or the other option is, they could divide that thing up, and build like everything else that's in that neighborhood with no open space. So, I mean, I, I think that's one of the nicer, successful ones that we've had.
By far. It, um, you know, it was one of my first meetings, and I remember being completely disgusted by the, some of the residents, because they were going on about how they didn't want low-income housing around their property. And I have to say, those homes look better than some of the existing homes around it now. And they have done nothing but elevate the community. So, you know, any, if, any developer that's gonna do something like that, and elevate the community, I'm not looking to shackle them, and tell them that they have to give me 20% of open space. You know, if somebody wants to put some zero lot lines in, and fill it up with beautiful brownstones, come home.
Chair, I have a question for you.
Yes.
As, as a note, I've talked to the Community Housing Network, the cost of each, each unit is over $300,000.
That's investment, that's what we need.
Chair, have a comment to make for usable open space?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be better if it read at least 10% or greater of the land area of the PUD, instead of more than 10%? So there's at least a 10% of the space that would be preserved?
To me, that, that sounds appropriate, it's, it's not an, you know, a crazy amount. You know, it could be front yards for homes, or backyards, so... Any, anybody have any thoughts?
I'm gonna throw one out there from a different direction. On a given legitimate-sized, single-family lot, I know there has been in the vast density requirements, that, uh, the amount of structure on those lots could not exceed a certain density of them. Do you happen to know what that number or percentage is offhand?
Uh, what's not featured, Chair? What's not featured are the design standards that we are working out, uh, right now. We just wanted to get in front of you this, the core policy changes from the proposed, or from the existing zoning ordinance. So we will include standards such as that, based on best practices, and we can emphasize them at our next meeting.
Very good. Have any other questions on this part?
I guess the only thing I'd say is, you know, there is a site plan approval process too, so, while you can have minimums, you control the site plan at the point of approval anyways. So, there's a little bit of, you've already got the landing.
Thank you, good point. Okay, so, moving to page 16, I just want to make sure that we're transparent with our requests here, and we're talking about this, doing our due diligence, talking about this. We have, um, we want your, your consideration on positive economic impact. So, some qualifiers that you would like to add to the city. Keep in mind that we already have our sustainable design standards, our streetscape standards, the connectivity and pedestrian standards. So, we have a couple of those buckets already. But, are there any other qualifiers that you would like to add to the, the economic impact requirements? And this allows a project to determine, or, oh, I'm sorry, they could choose, um... I think we, we would say like one out of the three standards, or two out of the three standards.
16.
Anybody have any thoughts on this one? I'm liking all three myself.
Thank you. Chair, do you think it should be, the project needs to have one out of the three? Standards?
Why can't it have all three?
Well, then that puts the project into a, a, a bu, oh, I don't know, a box. And it has to offer affordable housing units, or it has to, um, hire, do we have to hire East Point residents? It could, if the, if the Camellian Commission sees that.
I mean, the only one to me that would be... You know, you could probably lose number one. Number two is, is it definite, but, I, I don't want to put things in a box, but I'm not opposed to having an open box a little bit.
I mean, I look at number one, and I'm kind of jumping for joy, because that immediately eliminates any possibility of more storage units. I look at number two, and, uh, how do I want to... Kind of like number two, you're trying to put together a Swiss Army knife. We want one thing that does this, and we want another thing that does that, and we want another thing that does another thing. And are we requiring too many blades in our Swiss Army knife here? To a point where it's gonna be very hard to get a developer to provide all that. And number three, I don't like the term affordable housing, for a number of reasons. Number one, I think it has a bit of a negative connotation, as Mr. Dahant mentioned previously. And number two, really, affordable is, is a nebulous term. Because what somebody in one economic class considers affordable, somebody in another one doesn't. In other words, if you've ever been along Lake Shore Drive, for me, those houses aren't affordable, but they obviously are for the people that are living in them, so...
Are you looking for like an AMI index to show 20% median income? Or is that what you want to show versus affordable housing, so it's more concise?
No, I'm just saying how I feel about that.
Just the words, or did you want to see something different for the language?
Upper market price housing.
And the question here is, what would we like to see in an East Point? They're not proposing any of this, they're asking, is this what we want to have? I mean, I'd like, I like the idea of some mixed development, but, and like I said, how many blades you want to require in your Swiss Army knife?
Don't we already have a certain standards that we look at when we go through plan reviews? Is this necessary? Is this particular item necessary? We're already measuring certain criteria as we go through a plan review as it is.
Chair. So this criteria, let's keep in mind the definition, and, um, this is the standard, this is the definition. This is why planned unit developments exist. It's to offer a flexibility within the zoning ordinance, but then also, the counter of that is, it would, the project would be more of a benefit to the community. So, they wouldn't have to go comply by all these zoning regulations, but they would have economic development benefits, or landscape, more landscaping benefits, more like streetscape standards. That's why we have this criteria. And when we say affordable, we use the federal guidelines of how we define affordable, which will be presented in the glossary of the zoning ordinance. And social infrastructure, thanks for bringing that up. Social infrastructure is a really cool term. It can also be synonymous to places for the people. There's this great book out there, I can send you the link, it's called Palaces for the People. And, uh, the author writes about how childcare centers, libraries, grocery stores, cafes, all bring people together, and therefore, they make a, it is considered a palace, or a place for the people, or a social infrastructure, because if they are, these sites are tools for community gathering and, um, community strengthening.
Anybody have any other questions, Mr. Roll? Anybody? I do concur with Commissioner Lubeck about the word affordable. It would, I understand it might be a federal term, but very rarely do the feds get anything correct. So, something, market price housing, something like that, uh, would be... It, it, it's a matter of semantics, but semantics matter.
Do, overall, do we want to add anything else as positive impact, or do we feel these three areas? I think the question was, do we want to see? We didn't want to say all three, or you said examples, you said one of three, it has a minimum of at least some type of positive impact that we've kind of defined. And if we're good with these definitions, I know we can straighten up the word affordable housing. But are we three, are we okay with these three opportunities that can be used? Are we okay with these as being examples of a positive economic impact in East Point?
They're good examples.
Can I, can I just step back real quick? So I'm looking at the special land use review, and I know that's not exactly what we're talking about here, but, like, the criteria is harmony, number one, harmony with the master plan, number two, harmony with existing character. Number three, hazardous or disruptive, is it, or is it not? Improve, number four, improvement to the community, number five, adequate public services and facilities. There's three more, I think, I mean, isn't it? Isn't that enough? I mean, do we really need to, I just don't, I don't see the value in those. So we're already, we're already going through the criteria, we're already making sure that this is a positive, we're not gonna improve it if it's not a positive. Why do we need to define what, you know? I don't, I guess I just don't, I don't see value in that.
Chair, may I add?
Yes.
And I just wanted to remind that the PUD, planned unit development, is for a special type of development that does not fit in any of the zones that we are proposing within our new zoning ordinance. So it wouldn't fit into a mixed-use one, mixed-use two, mixed-use three. So this would be someone who's trying to seek exemption from the standards that we've already created. So we do want to set higher expectations and higher standards for a planned unit development, because we don't want people to continuously seek exemption from our current zoning ordinance. So this is like a very special case. To allow, again, for flexibility for certain types of developments, the ones that, again, don't have a negative impact on traffic, or further add to the connectivity of pedestrian vehicles, sustainable design, positive economic impact. So that's why we laid out these categories that are included. Because we felt, um, we wanted to cover all the bases of how a planned unit development could impact the city's current business, current residents' way of life.
Yeah, so like number two, so, number one, I don't think you can measure, right? Because you could create something, and how will you know if everybody's employed, you know, the people, the residents or the people are East Point residents? I mean, I don't know how you measure that. Number two, okay, so what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, is, if it's a daycare center, maybe we already allow that, but this PUD has a different, you know, size dimension, or some other aspects that wouldn't fall under our normal daycare center requirements, and the same for the other items. So, I get what you're saying, um, I don't know, number one, I wouldn't do, number two or three are... Makes sense, in that, in that context.
Any further thoughts on this?
I, I had a question, maybe you can answer this. What do you all see as, um, the impact of including number one?
Okay, well, I would welcome all of your feedback on what you see as well, but, um, just from what I see, is a guarantee that there will be a quality number of jobs for, for East Point residents.
I know, love, uh, for me, Chair. I know many other cities, uh, I know specifically Detroit, but a lot of them are being resident-specific. And speaking with Inkster, they're looking for projects that people come and employ their residents, so that that resources is actually staying in the community, and is benefiting people personally as far as employment opportunities. So that it's more of an emerging thing, that's a lot of development are now saying, make sure the development impacts the local residents with employment opportunities. I think it's a good thing to have, um, to ensure that developers just don't come, and they hire everyone else but our people, and all that money doesn't stay here, and people could be working, have some good jobs.
I, I agree. I just wanted someone else to answer the reason why, because it seems like there was a lot of opposition to number one, and to me, um, as a resident of East Point, I think it's, um... I think it's really helpful, especially as we talk about planning for the future, that, um, we ensure that we're not only bringing in, um, these PUDs, but we're ensuring that, um, if it's a type of business that could provide... provide employment for local residents, that we're pouring back into our residents as well. And that, that just, I think it all helps East Point as a whole.
Mr. Chair, so, piggybacking off of that, and Detroit was what I was thinking of specifically as well, well, I think East Point residents should have first crack at employment, considering how hard it is to find people to actually work, which is what happened with Detroit, when they said you have to hire so many people, but there weren't the people in Detroit to take the jobs. So, I think it's good, yes, if you can find the people to do it.
I was, before you stalled all the limelight, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I remember there was a big project in Detroit, where they had, the building trades had, there were certain levels of the amount of building tradespeople they needed, had to be Detroit residents. And if they weren't, then the construction company faced some significant fines because of that. And then when the building trades were actually consulted, they found out their membership did not have the numbers of tradespeople necessary to fulfill those requirements. So now you have a problem where, what, you stop building it, you don't build it, or you penalize the developer, because the population of the city doesn't support the requirements of the workers needed. And then the other comment that I very much agree with, is if anybody's paid any attention to the labor market, not just here, but around the country, the ability to find quality people that are willing to work for the wages that are being offered. I deal with a profession that you've got to be skilled to do it, it pays very well, and just about every business that I visit is shorthanded, or can't get people that they can depend on coming in. I was at a shop the other day, and the owner was on the phone with one of the guys, claimed his alarm didn't go off. And, so, he's telling the guy, well, get in here, well, this, making 27 different excuses why he slept in and he wasn't going to be able to make it to work that day. And the guy looks at me, he says, I deal with this guy in this three days a week. So, yes, I would love it to be, have a number of impactful jobs for East Point residents, but I don't know how you guarantee that. It's a noble goal, I just don't know that, how it gets achieved.
How about we change the language, and simply say, creates an opportunity for economically impactful jobs? That way, if East Point residents are willing to apply, then they can.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, I hear, and I kind of agree with what you're saying, that maybe there should be, obviously, East Point residents should have the priority over everybody else. And then, if you can't find enough, that you have to move on.
Absolutely. Who's going to police that?
If I may, Chair, the city Detroit has found solutions to that, because as a contractor and a Detroit business, a lot of times, those, the due diligence was not provided, and recommendations were also given, with incorporating small businesses on projects, you could guarantee Detroit residents. And so, we have negotiated in the city of Detroit to address the labor shortage. The union has now been authorized to actually start training skilled tradespeople without them being employed, it was the chicken and the egg. They couldn't get employed because they had no skills, and the union didn't train them because they weren't employed. So now, on a quarterly basis, we're bringing in talent to the trees, we've started with the carpenter union, we're looking for this to trickle into the other unions, so that we are training residents, so that they can go and work. So that was an old adage of laws from unions, stipulations that have been modified, excuse me, modified, and I think it's going to even create more solutions. We've also created the Motor City Contractors Fund, and we are actually bringing contractors into greater capacity to serve those job needs. The biggest thing is, was a lack of wanting to employ small businesses. And yet, as small businesses, we pay our fees to be certified and registered, and yet we were being overlooked. So those have been some of the remedies, and if you heard recently, now the city is ready to start moving forward with many of those projects around the District Detroit and the arena, because we have been working to make solutions. So I still say Detroit, if they can solve the problem, I think East Point is small enough that East Point's residents should not just be the priority, they should be bringing opportunities to our city that allows our city residents to be elevated. That's just how I felt, it's a personal choice, but I think we can find solutions. We all need to have employment, and we need local employment.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all of your conversation on this. And while this is still in our heads, I just wanted to explain a little bit more about the process. Reiterate, I'm calling what my colleague, Administrator Zoninger Smith, said, and also all of your points, Commissioner Broll. The PUD process is similar to a special land use process, so your feedback and thoughts are valid. Just so you guys know, the planning development requires a greater threshold in order to trigger planning development. As you, as you are well aware, we have our different bodies of government and cities, we have our zoning board of appeals, which usually transferences from a zoning ordinance, so, or we have the rezoning opportunity. So, projects that require maybe like one to three variances, we go to the ZBA. These are for projects that are, probably exceed that threshold. So I just wanted to say that might be a little bit technical, but I just want to say that while it's on our minds, just so we have a greater idea of what actually triggers the PUD.
I don't think your mic is on.
Do you, do you want me to repeat that?
Yes, because Otis is giving me the sign.
Okay, I will repeat all of that as eloquently as I did, thank you. Okay. Hi, Marshall, next time, put on my mic.
Sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what my colleague, Zoning Administrator Smith, and Commissioner Broll were stating, that the PUD, the Plan Unit Development Project, requires a greater threshold for a planning and zoning experience. So, what I mean by that, well, first of all, Commissioner Broll, it does, the Plan Unit Development does have similar review criteria to a special land use, so you're right in those thoughts, your thoughts are valid. But, as we all are aware, we have our zoning board of appeals, and we also have our rezoning opportunities. So the zoning board of appeals sees variance requests, and these are variances, or deviations from our zoning ordinance. So we already have that opportunity for people, that would, we would probably require the project to go to the ZBA if there are like one to three variances. And if they require rezoning, then they would come here. If we can settle the project with the current tools that we have, then we would take the project to those boards of authority. However, if the project just exceeds the threshold and requires multiple variances and a rezoning, then we would pursue the planned unit development opportunity, which we would pair with our community benefit requirements. And the PUD tool is then more considered as a developer agreement with community benefits. Okay. Thank you for allowing that more technical explanation, while the PUD is on the topic of our minds. And if everyone is okay, if you have any follow-up questions, let me know, but we can transition to our last item.
I think we're good.
All right, so the last section here is about non-conformities. So now that we are updating our zoning ordinance and changing zones, changing design standards, there is going to be some existing land use activities that are grandfathered, which essentially means non-conforming. And so, we want to allow for, you know, continued use and operations of certain businesses that are no longer conforming. And so, we actually base this off of Plymouth Township, and what they have allowed as a non-conforming use system, moving forward, so. Do you want to go through the examples first? Yes. So, the reason why we have to have certain considerations for non-conformities is because there's going to be cases that arise that we want to anticipate, and we want to create a procedure for them to continue business, or if they need to make an improvement to their building, et cetera. So, we can look at the examples and get your feedback here. So scenario one, a property owner on Nine Mile wants to add an extension to their building. That's no longer a conforming building by design. Should the city allow this if it's not detrimental to the adjacent property and residents? And the example we provided, if it's like a boutique hall in the downtown district that's no longer allowed?
I've got to say, I love your scenario, which draws you in, and then your example, which just throws you out. We've determined we do not want event halls in the downtown area. And typically with non-conformances, it's always been, you're allowed to have them, but not expand them. And like I said, with the example, oh, this sounds all great, yeah, everything's, wait And that makes me think that maybe it should be on a case-by-case basis. I'm thinking of one big non-conformance in our DDA, who wants to do an expansion and can't right now, because it's a non-conformance. So.
Chair, may I add?
Please.
Yes, we actually intentionally picked a controversial topic for the first one, because we wanted to show that we don't want all uses or all non-conformities to be able to continue. And as you just stated, it should be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, or maybe classified land uses or building types. So with that in mind, example two, a gas station on Nine Mile was recently sold after sitting vacant for a year. The new owner would like to continue operating the gas station. Should the city allow this to be considered a non-conforming use?
So am I, is it just me that's reading something else into this question? Should we have a sunset clause on when a non-conformity can become vacant, and then no longer be able to be used as its previous use?
Chair, there already is a sunset clause in the zoning ordinance, and it's standard throughout city zoning ordinances, I'm not sure if it's a Michigan state requirement, but uses are allowed to occupy, or to be used on a parcel, even if they're non-conforming uses, which means the uses don't meet the zoning ordinance standards of today. So if this, if the uses not meet zoning ordinance standards of today, for one year or more, then the use is no longer allowed. But if they're not considered abandoned, which means they have been in operation for one year, or under one year, or vacant for under one year, then they're still allowed to continue that use. So for example, if this question were to be read, a gas station on Nine Mile was recently sold after sitting vacant for 60 days. Well, we wouldn't be asking that question, because it would be already allowed to be used, because the use would not be considered abandoned if it was just vacant for 60 days. If it was vacant for more than a year, then the use is considered abandoned, so therefore, the sunset, like you said, requirement would be triggered. However, we're asking the board today, the commission today, if we want to add additional, review this policy on a case-by-case basis, and have, therefore, what I think my colleague was, well, my colleague was getting into, a proposed policy allowing Class A uses and structures, and Class B uses and structures. And we would consider each project on a case-by-case basis.
And when you say gra, gas station, my mind immediately goes to ground contamination.
Yeah, we would say no, sorry. We would, scenario two, we would say no. I mean, that would be the planner's recommendation.
Well, and again, my thought with the ground contamination is, okay, now, if you don't allow it, the ground's contaminated, but it can continue to operate as a gas station, provided the new requirements are in place at, the ground contamination, contaminating doesn't continue. But, as we were swindled on one of our deals in the city, oh, the ground contamination is so bad, it can't be anything but. So, okay, then essentially, if we don't allow it to continue to operate as a gas station, we got to wait for somebody to come along with some really deep pockets to remediate that contamination, to do anything else with it. Maybe I'm digging too deep here on some of this, where, again, like the previous question, it's a good idea, but.
So the topic of conversation today for the non-conformities worksheet is to get your feedback on if we should allow flexibility in non-conforming uses, so if we should allow Class A. So how comfortable are we saying that, where do we define Class A? That non-conforming uses and structures, based on our updated zoning ordinance, if they are not conforming, how comfortable are we saying, okay, well, some types of structures and uses could be allowed and continued, based on how they meet the master plan goals of a city, or if they're, like, only considering if they're not detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of a community? So are we in favor of having some, affording some flexibility here?
So it still goes through review, review process?
Exactly.
So I, I, yes, I would be absolutely in favor of that.
And I, I like the explanation that you gave about the Class A versus Class B, and then being able to come and request being certified as Class A. So yeah, I would say yes.
And for clarity's sake, right now, in the, in the current zoning ordinance, all uses, all non-conforming uses are considered Class B in that, in that class. So we are updating and affording a Class A, which would be a little bit more flexibility, based on qualifying criteria that Planning Commission decides, on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, that concludes our feedback.
Okay.
Requests? Thank you for the conversation.
No problem. I'm looking at Commissioner's report back under this, or did we wrap that all up in kind of our discussion? Okay. And presenting discussion from November 22nd Steering Committee meeting, was that wrapped up in there as well?
Yeah, it was wrapped up in there. We have our progress memo, which is essentially page negative two of the Steering Committee packet. We talked about our use table, and the area, the topics of discussion today, that we were, the comments that we received from the Steering Committee, we talked today. We talked about the zoning map comments today, but we talked about the parking standards today, and we talked about development review process a month ago. So, the Planning Commission is up to date and in advance to the Steering Committee. Thank you.
Okay, very good. One bit of unfinished business, Secretary, if you could note, Ms. Munez was here, I apologize not doing it earlier, I don't think we put it on the record. 7:12. Sorry, I would have done it earlier, but we got it. All right, so it's open and closed. Training, please tell me we don't have any training.
You're seeking training.
There we go. We have no training. Moving on to Commissioner's comments. Let's start with Ms. Holman.
Just heard another note that we are planning an all-boarded commission and front of the library, all of the get-together, that'll be Tuesday, December 20th. It is from five o'clock to about 6:30 before the city council meeting starts at seven. But we wanted, the city wanted to express a recommendation for all that the board and commission members have done in the past years, will have like a question, so Mr. Chan, you guys know everybody.
Mr. McCain, do you have any comments?
Sorry.
No?
No.
Okay. Fire Marshal.
No, sir, thank you very much.
Ms. Brashewski.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate all of our grateful, gratefulness?
Gratitude.
Gratitude. Okay, that, to the planning commission as we continue our conversations for the zoning ordinance update. And if you are interested in attending the final Steering Committee meeting, that is Thursday, Thursday, December 15th at 4:00 PM at City Hall. So we will be talking about the same things we talked about today, but if you're interested in attending, you feel free to come. Also, if you have any other questions about the zoning ordinance and whatever topic material may be presented, please come and chat with me and my colleague during our office hours or anytime. We are here in City Hall, at City Hall, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, one to four at least. So we are available for you. And I also just want to say thank you to my colleague for the excellent presentation on parking. I have never seen as great as a presentation on parking. It was very succinct, and I just grateful that you presented that to the community today. We really appreciate it and benefit.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Chair. It's great to see everyone tonight. I think this is the full, the first planning commission meeting that I've been to where every seat is filled on the commission, so it's great to see all of you here. And, yeah, I hope that the presentation on parking was helpful background information to set the stage for what prompted our need for some parking reform. And we also do have a survey. If you look on the Steering Committee meeting number six page at the bottom, we've created a project satisfaction survey that you can access by QR code to provide any feedback that you may have about the zoning ordinance rewrite process. And with that, we'll see you next one.
Thank you. Councilman DeMonico.
Thank you. Chair, well, I think it was good to see no development items on the agenda for a great conversation then for a couple hours. I think that was, that was nice. And, yeah, thank you, Maran Brigitte, great presentations. And I know we've met, of course, before, but welcome again, Ian, to the city of East Point. And then next week, make sure you come to the tree lighting, we have from today, here, right outside, starting at 6:30? Six, 6:30? 6:30? Come on out at 6:30. And I guess see you at this table next in 2023.
Okay. Mr. Obrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Ian, and just like to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season. Can't believe it's already upon us.
Mr. Laland.
I just want to reiterate, reiterate what you just said, happy holidays to all of you, and if you travel, travel safe. That's it.
We're going to mix it up. Secretary Yulinski.
Welcome back. Glad you're better. I just wanted to welcome Mr. McCain. It'd be great working with you. And ladies, you did a marvelous job tonight. Appreciate it very much. John, I gave everybody last meeting new titles and, you know, mixed up names. Sorry you missed all that. But I did want to give a shout out, actually, to all the residents and their decorating skills. If you ride through the city, there's a lot of great Christmas displays. And I want to give a shout out to a business, Coalville, whoever did the painting on their windows, it's just fantastic. So looking forward to hopefully more businesses being festive, and that doesn't mean festive with rope lighting. Yes, I have to go there again because there's just so many who blatantly are not being business-friendly yet in return. They want us to, but that'll get resolved, I'm sure. But happy holidays to everybody and be safe.
Ms. Naylor.
I'd like to say have a happy holiday, welcome to Mr. Ian. And the councilman, next to you, John, remember his name?
Jeff.
Next to you.
Jeff.
Yes, I didn't see him last meeting, last meeting. It's good to have a cool house as you stay there, and everyone have a great, great holiday season, safe holiday season.
Ms. Munez.
I just want to again commend the city administration as well as McKenna for excellent presentations, answering our questions, contending with all of our failure to understand sometimes, but bringing clarity that we need. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate all of the hard work that you guys put in so that we look at least partially good of your own guys. So, thank you. Also, just want to say, Chair, welcome back. We're glad to have you back, and just wish everyone a very safe holiday season.
Commissioner Lubek.
Secretary, it looks like he's following in your shoes.
Right, just give everybody new titles.
I'll start with happy holiday season. My holiday of choice is Christmas, so Merry Christmas. Thank you for all the work all of you do. I apologize if sometimes I seem a little annoying with going back to things from history in this city, but sometimes I think it's helpful to see where we came from, so it gives us a better opportunity to define where we're going. I'm excited about this new master plan and about the way we're actually doing something with it, changing things, to actually get East Point going in the direction of a master plan, other than something that, in my experience, has been thrown on a shelf and dusted off every few years, and maybe after a couple of dustings off, a revision. A lot of work was put into that by a lot of people, and now the work really begins as we see here. I'm also going to make one more comment. Nobody did, and this is for a special person on our board. Go Blue. Go Bucks.
I'm an annual resume right here. Mr. Broll.
I said it last time I was here, I missed the last meeting, but I really appreciate city planners and the hard work that is going into all this. And I don't think I said it last time, but the Steering Committee as well is, you know, this is really good work. And I would also add that I like how this body, everybody's playing into it, because we've had it before where there's not as much interaction and only one or two people are speaking. It's really good to hear that everybody has an opinion and everybody's making that opinion clear, so I think that's really healthy. That's it.
Thank you. Before I go on to my comments, please note that the disclosure forms were in front of your seats. If you haven't filled out the disclosure form, please do so like now. You can leave it up here, and then Kim can collect them. That way, it's all done, and you don't have to worry about it. We're all compliant with disclosure. So aside from that, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season. I will say holiday season, even though I want to say Merry Christmas, but I have a lot of Jewish friends, so I've gotten into the habit of saying happy holidays. I'm trying not to pontificate here, but I want to apologize first for missing the last meeting. I try not to miss these meetings, but the organization that I am part of is a national group, and we meet twice a year. And what we do is we try and support our members through scholarships for their children, hardship funding for some of them, educational opportunities. We try and take care of our own people because there's no one else in my industry that will take care of my, my peers. So it's a very important program to me, and that's why I wasn't here. Having said that, it is important that we take care of our community. It is important that we look out for our community. It is important that we fight back when people start giving us a black eye in a nice and respectful way. So I'm going to coin a phrase that was used many years ago when they said, say nice things about Detroit. I'm going to say, do nice things in the city of East Point. And I'm going to leave it there. Everybody have a wonderful holiday season. I hope you're all safe and sound and.
Motion to adjourn.
And at that, and at that point, I'd like to call the adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Thank you.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubek.
Yes.
Mr. Laland.
Yes.
Mr. Broll.
Yes.
Ms. Munez.
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, Yasmin, Ms. Naylor.
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan.
Yes.